I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Due to the supervisor unable to make tonight's meeting, I would like to make a motion for Treasurer Rogers as acting supervisor for this evening's meeting.
Support.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Okay. With Clerk Cody Ebsen, would entertain a motion to place a temporary clerk for this evening?
Make a motion.
Lay.
Trustee Lay as clerk for Clerk Cody.
Support.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
It's okay.
We'll have a roll call vote?
Sure. Acting Supervisor Rogers?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Lannan?
Here.
Trustee Thering?
Here.
Acting Secretary Lay?
Here.
Or not Secretary, Clerk.
Okay. You've all reviewed the agenda.
I'd like to place a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
We've got three supports.
I do have one question about the agenda. In lieu of, or not in lieu, because we have two members of our board missing, would new business item D be more appropriate to wait until the next agenda, our next, our next meeting?
Yes.
I agree with that.
Manager Stildrer, are you okay with that?
Certainly.
So I would like to make a motion to move new business item D to, what's the date of our next?
Twelve.
Make a motion to move new business item D, consider the discussion action of consider renewal of the township manager employment agreement and negotiation of the same for 2026 performance review and current employment agreement that's agreement to our next meeting of November 12th.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Okay, motion carries. We have any presentations tonight?
We do not.
We do not. Okay, moving forward. Public hearing for the budget.
We do have scheduled and posted, noticed, a public hearing for the FY 2026 budget. I would recommend that you state that you're opening the public hearing at X time and then that'll provide an opportunity for anybody online or in, in the audience to speak to the budget and then at the appropriate time announce that you're closing the public hearing and note the time.
Okay, and then we vote on it?
No vote, it's just public hearing.
Okay. So open the public hearing for the FY 2026 budget at 7:04. Tara, is there anyone online?
There is not.
There's not. Anyone here who can just speak about the budget? Any comments from board members? We've reviewed it at length.
The primary purpose of the public hearing is to allow the board of trustees to receive comment, information, input from the public. It's a requirement and it's good business. It's part of the Uniform Budget Act. And so, once you've closed the public hearing, then that piece of the process has been completed.
Yeah, thank you. Seeing there's no discussion and no comments, close the public hearing at 7:05. We have public comment. This is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. This is an opportunity to comment only, questions would not be answered at this time. For specific answers and questions, please call Township Hall later. If you do wish to stand and state your name, address, please.
And we do have Amanda Brake here. She'll introduce herself. She's going to speak to Maslow's Village and it's on the agenda because there's a number of letters on that topic in your agenda packet, although there's no new business or anything like that on the agenda.
Thank you. Go ahead, Amanda.
So again, my name's Amanda Brake. I am the Board President and Acting Director for Maslow's Mount Pleasant Tiny Homes Village. I just came to say thank you. Thank you for reading all those letters. I know they were a lot. I know that sometimes in your position, it's really important to make sure that there is support in our community for the things that we are proposing and wanting to move forward with. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of myself and my board. And October 10th was worldwide, rather homelessness day. And so, we just wanted to commemorate that with the actions that we're taking and moving forward with our village. And thank you for having me and thank you for considering.
Thanks, Amanda. Seeing no one online to know further public comment, I closed public comment at 7:07. Okay, now it's time for board members' reports, please. We see the current list of members and spots open in commissions. We're still looking for someone in EDA. Is that right, Mark?
Yes.
EDA, okay.
There are no applications in your packet. We are working to fill, of course, position on the EDA. We have an opening on the Library Committee coming up. Or the Union Township's appointment to the Library Board is expiring at the end of the year. But there are no applications for consideration tonight.
Thank you. The October monthly activity report. You've reviewed this?
This unfortunately was not done in time for insertion into your packet. I did email it to you all this afternoon and it's part of the agenda packet online now. I know you haven't had much chance to review it, but you have received it. And if you have any questions on it, either tonight or in the future, just contact me.
Okay, thank you. We've all had the chance to review the correspondence in support of the rezoning of Maslow's Mount Pleasant Tiny Homes Village. Any comments?
I think that thing's a great idea. I really do. Thank you for spending your time. I've always been intrigued since the first time I met you and you came in with you and did a presentation to us. Just an outstanding job. I'm very happy to see, see this in the letters. Thank you.
So, of course, food and shelter are most basic needs of citizens and this can create an opportunity to allow more of our citizens to find shelter of their own to utilize. And I think the location that's being proposed for it is a terrific location in our community and was quite overwhelmed with the very positive and heartfelt letters that were included in our board packets in support of the Maslow Tiny House project. So excited to see the possibility of our community growing and becoming a more complete community as this possibly comes to fruition.
Right, working to make things better.
Absolutely.
I just wanted, our planning commission yesterday had some, quite a bit of discussion about this project. So I'm hoping based on our, on our commission's comments that we help the Maslow's project move, move forward and so the township can see where we can, what we can or what we can do.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Nanny?
Thank you. As was mentioned, we had a planning commission meeting last night. Amanda Brake did attend that meeting. Tended that one via Zoom, which the planning commission actually appreciated. The opportunity to use the Zoom feature for that. But there was discussion on this correspondence of the project. Direction, I think feedback given was very helpful, hopefully, to their plans. The other item on the, on the planning commission's agenda was a proposed zoning ordinance amendment. It's related to firearms dealers, federal firearms licenses. Our current ordinance allows gunsmiths, it's the term that's used in the ordinance in a number of zoning districts. It allows it essentially as part of a home occupation type activity, doing it out of your home in residential districts, but with a special use permit. And we had a gentleman that's interested in doing this and he brought to the, to staff's attention that that special use permit and the requirement for a public hearing can create some significant challenges for this type of business because notices are required. Everyone within 300 feet of the property of the home receives a notice of this activity. It's also posted in the newspaper and on our website here at the Township Hall. And the person, gentleman raised concern about safety issues that might result from that. Firearms dealer may have firearms in their home. It certainly tells other people that there may be firearms there. And it creates a safety issue not only for, for the people in that home, but potentially for neighbors around. The suggestion was, could we, could we adjust this so that a public hearing is not required for somebody to have a, have a firearms dealer license and do business in their home? At a, at a limited scale, the kind of thing, many firearms dealers simply work over the internet. They actually have fewer, no customers coming to the home. They often are working with firearms sales where they actually don't even have the firearms in their homes. But they're simply, they go between the middleman of the process. So the planning commission did look at this question. This is an issue that has come up for us before. It's been discussed before. I've seen this in other communities where similar issues that come up with the hearing requirement. The planning commission did decide that they would consider an amendment to the ordinance. And so that, that was, what was on the table last night was a kind of initial look at a proposed amendment to move firearms dealer out of the requirement for a hearing where it would operate as home occupation. So that, they did make a decision to hold a hearing on that proposed amendment at their next meeting in November. So I would expect that this will eventually come, come to you for final action. But at this point, we'll be holding a hearing at their November 18th for that. Both the planning commission and the EDA board adopted their 2026 meeting schedules. The other items, that was all really on the planning commission's agenda. The EDA board took, took action on their 2026 budgets for the East and West EDA districts. There was extensive discussion about the proposed outdoor fitness court studio in Jamison Park. This was actually, I think this is second or third time that the project has been, before that was part of a budget conversation. But this was the first time it really came up as a concern. And in the end, after extensive discussion, the board made a motion to adopt their 2026 budgets and recommend them to you for final action without that item in their budget. So they, they have recommended that that, that the outdoor fitness court for Jamison Park not be included in their 2026 budget. So I'd make you aware of that and obviously that will come up further in your conversations about the budget. But at this point, as I said, they have adopted the budget without it. They did have a closed session to get an update on a discussion of the consideration of the purchase of real property. Looking at, at property in the DDA districts for a potential purchase. And this was an opportunity to give them an update on where that evaluation stands. So that is all I have for the EDA board. I've had to get any questions beforehand.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Nanny. Now it's time for board member reports. Trustee Thering?
I have nothing more to add. Thanks.
Okay. Trustee Brown?
Officer, thank you.
Trustee Lannan?
Yeah, I have a couple to relay to y'all. Last Wednesday night, out at Denver Township, I attended the Michigan Township Association's Isabella County Chapter. And our speakers that evening were the road commission headed up by Director Tony Casalis. And he basically went through the accomplishments that the road commission has experienced, really under his tenure, which he's been the director there for 19 years now. And, and he was quite proud of accomplishments under his tenure. He noted that they built a new building five years ago and they had financed it for 15 years, but have paid off the building in five years. So he relayed how that frees up money for additional bridge work, road work, transportation work. He also noted though that during the floods of 2017, the impact that the Bureau of Indian Affairs had in supplying funds for repairs of roads and bridges in that area. And he had mentioned the Bureau of Indian Affairs has really made a major difference in their financial condition today. And then he went through some data of bridges and roads. And so that was his report and Sheriff Maine spoke for a moment. And he had indicated that it appears that there is going to be some money available to, it looks like, be able to supply to road patrol officers. Not that their duties would be 100% patrol. They'd be doing some administrative work like serving papers and things that the sheriff and undersheriff currently are doing. But it would allow probably 50% of their time to be road patrol. So that was pretty encouraging news for the township folks to hear that. So that pretty much took care of the MTA County Chapter meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I also attended last night the Isabella County Board of Commissioners' regular board meeting. Business that went on there was an appointment at large to represent the Human Rights Committee. And this one warmed my heart a little bit. They appointed a past board member, trustee of this board, Phil Micus, who has served on this board previously. So that was really nice. They also appointed a Democrat and Republican representative to be part of the Isabella County Board of Canvassers. Those folks were Tim Caldwell and Brent Fisher. There were also three motions made and approved for divorced farms, making application for farms, farmland agreement. Two in Gilmore Township, one in Isabella Township, and one in Nottawa Township. And those agreement applications were all passed. And the what do you call it? The the townships, it was presented to the board. By, all the townships, they figure out what their tax mileage is going to be. And that was presented by the Equalization Department. And that was a report presented for them to look at and it will have to be agreed to and approved. And that pretty much concluded. They went into closed session and that concluded the Isabella County Commissioners' meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Lannan.
You're welcome.
Trustee Lay?
I had my second meeting of the Cultural and Recreation Commission last Wednesday. We held officer elections. I was appointed, I was elected chairperson of the commission. County Commissioner Hope was elected vice, the vice chairperson. And we had a, the representative from Mount Pleasant Schools, Sean Stressman was appointed as the treasurer. And then we set our, we set our schedule for next year. So we will be meeting on a monthly basis for the duration of 2026. Just so that we can kind of get a handle on what's going on with, you know, everyone's news. So we want to kind of do some digging as to what the, you know, CRC is really about and how we can make sure that we have, you know, good forward momentum. And then I found out that they, if anyone has been to the sportsplex recently, they will know that the elevator has been inoperable for some time. And we finally got an update that it should be installed first of next year, probably in January. So the elevator's been ordered through a company out of Grand Rapids and they are estimating arrival of the elevator. They're having to replace the whole thing early January of 2026.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Lay. I've got a report from the road commission meeting, October 9th. They, I didn't realize this, but they build trucks for other road commissions, which is a good moneymaker. They make very well-built trucks. They also have a message board, 100 inches by 55 inches that could be put somewhere, you know, warning of something ahead. So they're pretty excited about that. They can do a lot of different things with it. They're doing the edge cleanup along the roads and have a notice to, to, for the homeowner to do it and then bill them if they don't get it done and the road commission has to do it. But the farm's too close to the road, was the idea. Nottawa Township, and I know Lake Isabella was also struggling with the sewer, trying to get that in place. Well, Nottawa Township has canceled sewer, sewer plan for Kowada Lake. In the legislature, the road tax will be inadequate, but they'll make it work. It's not, it's what they're hoping for. There's only one asphalt supplier for them right now. So then they mentioned about the share, state revenue sharing. We've been talking about that, so. And who had the consent agenda this month? We've had all the time to review it. You did?
I had warrants.
Okay.
I'm satisfied.
Okay. Move to approve?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to move to approve then?
The consent agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, want to make a motion to that?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Same sign? Okay, then we move on to new business. Okay, Mr. Nanny?
I'll take this one.
Okay.
The, thank you and good evening, everybody. Before you tonight is a request to consider Before you tonight is a request to consider the adoption of a resolution of intent to participate in the 2026 National Fitness Campaign for the installation of a new outdoor fitness court studio at Jameson Park via the acceptance of a $60,000 grant that was awarded to Union Township and to commit to providing up to $300,000 of local funding for this project in FY 2026, subject to the, ultimately, the separate action of approving an appropriation resolution. Mr. Nanny spoke to this a moment ago. Before getting into that part of it, this would be a barrier-free, accessible, multiple fitness exercise stations designed for folks that are 14 years of age and older of all abilities. It's barrier-free, so it's acceptable to those that may be disabled. It primarily is a body weight circuit training design, core movements, squats, lunges, pulls, agility, that kind of thing. It is similar in design, although not exactly, to what's been at McDonald Park for several years now. The feedback and the data that we've obtained from McDonald Park has been very positive. I think it was the Fitness Campaign that actually reached out to us based on the data that they received through the app that folks use there, suggesting that Union Township could handle a second one. And these kind of, call them outdoor activities at our parks has been, particularly for the young adults and adults, having something more for them being offered for those folks, has been a priority of the Board. And I think specifically Trustee Brown brought these type of things up several years ago, trying to increase some, to provide some facilities at the parks for young adults and the older folk. This is designed, and all the materials are for outdoor, heavy use in the outdoor environment. The one in McDonald Park has been holding up very well. Jameson Park design is what they refer to as a studio design. It has the same number of stations as at McDonald Park, but then it also has an additional 38 square foot of padded, open space that, with the cushion flooring and all that, which is good for free-form exercises. It would be a place for group exercise classes to be held. When we were under COVID and everybody was locked down, we had a couple, I'm not sure what the businesses were, are, how they're referred to, exercise businesses, training businesses. We had one or two that had, that were scheduling their classes outdoors and using McDonald Park. So this would, and not the fitness center, but just the ground. So this would, this extra 38 square feet would set up for that type of activity very well. Would be located near, I guess it'd be east of the restrooms at Jameson Park. It would involve the removal of the ballfield dugouts and fencing and replacing the infield grass that's there with, or the infield dirt with grass, essentially doing away with the ballfield. Ballfield's been there for a very long time, but over the last decade or so, that field has not been used by little leagues or the tournaments that come into the community. They're usually looking more for facilities that have multiple fields like McDonald Park. So we don't think it would negatively impact anything in the local baseball arena. There is an option for the long face, like we have in McDonald, there's some artwork there. When we put in McDonald Park, we held a competition for a rap, artwork that you see out there now, that would provide competition. Last time, we worked with Art Reach, and the selected artist received $5,000 for that. So that was kind of an exciting part as well, to do the outreach to the local artist community. And they were excited to be able to participate. Again, the resolution, there's a couple things going on in the resolution I want to make sure you're aware of. It's to commit to facility installation at Jameson Park by accepting the $60,000 grant award and to commit to the, to local funding up to $300,000 for this project, again, subject to the eventual budget appropriation resolution. The cost of this is outlined on page 52 of your agenda packet. There's the equipment itself, the assembly, concrete, pad, sidewalk extension over to it from the parking area, the demolition and removal of the dugouts and fencing, reseating of the infield gravel with topsoil and ground cover. $346,750 is the project budget. Assuming the Board moves forward, we then would be receiving $60,000 in grants for a net project of $286,750,000. The current and original funding plan for that was the general fund would contribute $60,000. We have a 2% grant application in for $99,000. And as was indicated by Mr. Nanny, we had submitted a recommended budget to the EDA that included $240,000 that, as you've heard, they've since removed. As it relates to the technicalities of how the EDA and the Board of Trustees interoperate, by rule, the EDA adopts their own budget with a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, and it's the Board of Trustees that has final approval of the EDA budget. So in theory, the Board of Trustees has the authority to reinstate that $240,000 into the EDA's budget. That would come with some complications logistically, and I think more important, it could create some ill will between the EDA and the Board of Trustees, so we want to be careful of that. But I do want to point out what your legal authorities, technical authorities are in that regard. So we will need to work on a modified, I'll call it a modified funding plan. We have not yet been given, we have not yet had time to do that. But I can envision some sort of combination of, and I will say, okay, so we have the original funding plan, 240,000, EDA, 2% grant, 99,000, and then there was going to be a general fund appropriation of 60,000. That's $399,000, which is $99,000 more than an estimated, so we, 399,000 when you total it all up. If we do not receive the grant award, this funding plan would then drop to $300,000, which is enough to meet the costs. But since the 240,000 from the EDA, we need to do something else. And we're working on that something else, but I would imagine it would be some combination of an increased general fund share, 60,000 going up to something, and then going back and asking the EDA for maybe a lower amount. And they would effectuate that by a budget amendment and those kinds of things. So, and there are other avenues that we could explore for funding as well. So having said all that, the EDA's recommendation, which removes the 240, creates some challenges, but I don't think there are challenges that we cannot overcome collectively within the community. So I would stay with our, continue to recommend that the Board of Trustees pass the resolution as recommended, that accepts the $60,000 grant, commits the Board of Trustees to $300,000, again, keeping in mind that that piece is subject to, and National Fitness Campaign knows this, that that piece is subject to eventual approval of an appropriation resolution, which we have targeted for November 12th. So the point of that is, you can proceed tonight, but there are still opportunities to shelve the project completely or allow us to figure out a different funding plan.
Okay.
I know there's a lot there, but those are my comments on this item. Be happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Thank you, Manager Stoudraire.
So, yeah, I do have a question. It won't, so potentially, are we looking at making a motion to accept the grant fund and make a motion to go forward with this project? That's kind of where we're at tonight.
Right. Well, we, as Manager Stoudraire said, it can be shelved if it doesn't work out to get the funding the way it needs to be for it to work. So we've got the resolution here.
So, I'm just, a question would be, as far as the timeframe goes with the National Fitness Campaign, and is there a time problem if we delayed or tabled a vote on this till our next meeting, till maybe more thought came together as to what the funding would be for that $240,000, the alternate funding potentials from the local support? Yeah.
I think that would be to me.
Yeah.
There are. The National Fitness Campaign was really wanting a resolution tonight to commit, to accept, accept the 60,000, because they have other people that can use this money. And, and then we, and at the same time, commit to the project, okay? And our response back to them, my response back, was that the Board of Trustees can only do that commitment of the additional funding, commit to up to $300,000, through the budget appropriation resolution. And they agreed to that, but it does push out the original timeline, the desired timeline, further than they initially wanted.
So our worst, our worst-case scenario is if we got, if we did not receive any 2% funding, is, and I counted the 60,000 that was already appropriated from the general fund, is 286,000. Is that, am I reading that correct?
The 286 is net of the grant, okay? So you got 286, and you're, now you're trying to figure out a funding.
Okay, right.
And I will assume, in one scenario, that we do receive the 99K from the tribe. And that would then create a need for 187,000 bucks. The current funding plan also assumes a $60,000 general fund contribution, so that takes you down to 127,000. So I would suggest that the worst-case scenario, assuming the Board approves the 60,000, would be 127,000 that may need to come back to the Board of Trustees. The other scenario is we don't receive the 99,000 from the tribe, nor do we, does the Board end up agreeing to the 60,000 as part of the existing funding scheme? And then you're back up at the 286,000. So that's kind of the two bracketed worst and maybe best cases. I would never presume to speak for the EDA, but one of the concerns they expressed was, in their minds, even though, as Mr. Nanny said, they've had some discussion about this three times, I think, that they were a little unclear on the, I'll say, the details and the data that supports the recommendation that another one would be well-used in a good location at Jameson, that maybe the EDA felt they didn't have a lot of that. I also think that, over the years, there's been a lot of cooperation between the Board of Trustees and the EDA, and so that if, you know, again, not speaking for the EDA, but if we went back to the EDA with a request to amend their budget, to add something to that for this project, that, you know, maybe less than the 240, that they would at least listen to that. I don't, I'm not going to say how they're going to vote. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Perfectly. Thank you.
Question, Manager. Did we have a National Fitness Campaign grant associated with the exercise unit here at McDonald Park?
We did. They, at that time, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nanny, but their grant program was in three, three sizes, if you will, 30K, 50K, 60K. And we, I believe, applied for 50K, and they ended up awarding us 60K.
That's the case for this, this project, yes.
That's the case with this. That's the case with this project.
Actually, for the McDonald Park, they did not have the sixty dollar, sixty thousand dollar grant option for that one. We actually, we actually were originally awarded for McDonald Park, thirty thousand dollars, but they, after the grant award, they changed it and made it the full of fifty thousand.
So fifty thou for McDonald Park grant, Jamison Park, sixty thou.
So is it tradition that annually this opportunity comes up to see grants, applications to the National Fitness Campaign?
I don't know their history. I know they're interested in putting these all across the country. I think, although not. I think your question leads to, would we have another opportunity or bite at the apple a year from now? I don't know that, I don't know that. But what I do know is that, I'm going to have to look for the exact number, but we have about a two hundred and sixty percent or two and a half year fund balance. So depending on your appetite for risk as it relates to our ability to gather other funding partners, your appetite for risk by committing tonight, what your, I guess, to use trustee bearings terminology, worst-case scenario, there's funding available.
So to, to clarify, all we have to vote on, the only thing that's really truly time-sensitive right now, tonight, would be accepting this grant.
There's the other piece that I committed to the foundation.
Yes.
So there's two things in the resolution and if, and the resolution is on page fifty-three, and you have a half a dozen wherashes, and then you get down to the first now, therefore, accepting the sixty thousand dollar grant is one piece of the resolution. And then be it further resolved, Township Trustees commit to the inclusion of a total local funding up to three hundred thousand, which I've been speaking to, in the twenty-six budgets, subject to the separate budget adoption action of the appropriation resolution.
My question is, if the other pieces don't fall into place, we are able to just walk away? We, we haven't lost?
That's a correct statement. But I don't want you to, if, if, if you're only interested in the piece of the resolution that, that fits with the sixty thou, if you don't want the other part of the resolution as part of the language, then I would suggest you just don't approve the resolution. They need something on their end to give them some sense of comfort that we're going to continue moving forward. They recognize that as a public body entity, it's only the annual appropriation resolution that casts it more in stone, if you will. If that makes sense.
More comment or any motions?
I want to make a motion. I ran on this. Make a motion, adopt resolution of intent to participate in the two thousand twenty-six National Fitness Campaign for the installation of a new outdoor fitness court studio at Jamison Park to accept the sixty thousand dollar national grant from the NFC Grant Committee and Priority Health, and to commit to the, providing the necessary local funding for this project in the FY two thousand twenty-six Township Budget, subject to a separate budget adoption action with the necessary appropriation of these funds.
Support it.
Thank you.
Those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, sorry, discussion?
So as far as I understand this, I am pro-physical fitness, pro-park improvement, pro the thought of improving our community to hit various segments of the community and give them opportunity to meet what are ends talk about quality of life, you know, ability to thrive. And so I really like this. On the counter side, you know, I, I think about, we have a fitness center like this in our community, right here. We're looking at adding and improving our other park. So as the Board, there is the potential that we are wanting to appropriateate, I'm just going to say roughly, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of general fund money to another exercise station. Is that our highest priority for that money? It may be. As is noted, we have money in the general fund to make improvements. It's the taxpayers' money. If we're not spending it and we have it, then maybe we're taxing too much. So with those things going through my head, but as far as I understood, you know, we have a request in for two percent money with the Saginaw Chipmunk Tribe. I believe we're still waiting on that commitment to be announced. So that's not a guarantee. And I certainly think our relationship with the EDA and the East EDA and those folks, you know, absolutely, I, I agree with them. There's great potential for willingness for them to consider some sort of donation. So I just kind of trying to weigh those things. Can you delay a year, two years? And end up in a better situation or will, will it cost you more? Will that grant opportunity not be there? So you kind of got a moving targets of, as I believe the DA said, you know, not a hundred, not real good clarity, I guess, on, no, nothing's firmly established.
Right.
I don't say nothing, but there are things that hinge on other things.
Right.
So just as a point of discussion for all of you to consider, I just throw these things out.
Right.
I've considered it.
I mean, when I ask Manager Stuldryer about our worst-case scenario.
We went through it three times.
I, you know, I'm just going to say that's what we're going to end up spending. And, and as Manager Stuldryer did say, we do have a two percent request and there is a potential for an opportunity to go back to the EDA. And we could say, would they, would they want to participate in some way and let them think about that? But my support of this is, with the understanding that this might be what the general fund has to do.
And it will be worth it.
Manager Stuldryer, is there a time limit on when we use the grant? We have to use it, what, by the end of twenty-six before we lose it?
I don't know if there's a time limit on when the grant would have to be used.
The grant is associated with this particular installation.
Yes.
It really, if, if this installation does not go forward, the grant does not go forward.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I may, Chair.
Certainly.
Couple of things that I want to, one, I want to reiterate is that the data suggests that there is sufficient demand for a second fitness court. And then as it relates to, more specifically, Jamison Park, we've spent quite a bit of money over the last several years improving that park in a variety of ways. We partnered with the city on a, I'll call it playground equipment, for lack of a better term. We have remodeled the interior and the exterior of the hall itself. There's a big piece of ground out there that is underutilized. That's the ball field. And we feel that this facility, I'll call it a facility, the outdoor fitness facility, is a first step in, and I would think a good step in our efforts to revitalize and make more use of Jamison Park. Thank you.
Any more discussion?
One more question, just in regards to the area. Have we gotten through the sidewalk issue out there yet?
Nope.
Good question, though.
But we will.
We're working on it. Yep.
One way or the other, we will.
Okay. No further discussion. Call for a vote. All those in favor supporting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Also, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next we have. Sorry?
Roll call.
I think because of the nature of the resolution, that a roll call vote may be needed.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Lannan?
Yes.
Trustee Lay?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Okay. There it is.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll continue working on the funding plan and hope to have a little bit more clarity on that in the next month or so.
I just, I'm looking at these studio people and they look so happy doing their little exercises together and I, I want this for our community.
That brings us to New Business B, Discussion Action, Manager Stuldryer, Policy Governance 2.5, Financial Conditions and Activities.
This is, there's a report on page fifty-five of your agenda packet. This is a quarterly review of governance policy 2.5 titled Financial Conditions and Activities. October is one of the quarterly intervals to review this policy. The policy wording, at its highest level, with respect to the actual ongoing financial conditions and activities, the Township Management Team shall not cause or allow the development of fiscal jeopardy or a material deviation of actual expenditures from Board priorities as established in your ends. Goes on to say, without further, without limiting the scope of what I just read, he or she shall not, and then there are ten sub-polices. It's all in your packet. I'm not going to read all those right now. But I interpret the policy to state that there will be one, no expenditures made or incurred that will exceed the expenditures budgeted for the current year, unless it's an emergency purchase as outlined in Policy 2.5.6. And the manager shall also not make a single purchase or commitment of greater than twenty thousand dollars or inform the Board of Purchases over ten thousand dollars. And those levels were increased about a year ago. Further, that all tax payments to the other governmental entities are to be paid according to the state statute. Payrolls to be paid bi-weekly, accounts payable invoices are processed timely, ready for Board approval. And as they are received, we verify them in code for payment and put them in the hopper for your consideration during your consent agenda. And I believe this is a reasonable interpretation. When the budget's approved by the Board, it's then left to the management team to operate within the guidelines established by the Board through your policy, governance policy writ large, and to follow all state and federal statutes. This amplifies that the, the primary function of the Board is to function as a policymaking body. And then it's up to the management team to function as the implementor of that policy as articulated in the approved budget. That's my justification, that it's a reasonable interpretation. In your packet, there are reports for the general fund and all other budgeted funds, special revenue enterprise. So all those reports are in there. You have the amended budget, year-to-date balance, percent of budget used. And you also have, in addition to those reports, I can say with certainty that no new debt was issued or acquired in the third quarter of 2025. We have been adding to our general fund reserves over the last several years. We have made all payroll timely in, in the quarter, July, August, September. All tax, pay, tax, payroll taxes were submitted to the IRS timely. All that reporting has been done timely. All collections of taxes have been made within the two-week time period following the fifteenth and the month-end of each month. There were no purchases greater than what's allowed in the policy. And if there were, you were notified the same. I looked through my records and I didn't see any that. So we have none noted there. There has been no real property purchased or acquired in these three months. We pursue all receivables regularly and I would suggest aggressively. And as you've, as you all are aware, with our fund balance levels, cash flow in any of these funds is more than, more than enough to ensure timely payment of all our bills and payrolls and those kinds of things. So you wrap that all together and I'd suggest that the administration's in compliance with the policy. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Manager?
I don't have a, I just have a comment, not a question, if I could. I want to thank you and the staff for exceptional, great job on the 2.5 financial, for sure. And has been for years, ever since I've been here. But I think even more so now. I just, I want to say thank you for, to you and the staff for that work.
Appreciate those comments and I'll be sure to pass those on to the staff.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd agree that we are certainly in compliance with 2.5.
Yep. That brings us to item C in New Business, Discussion Action, Manager Stuldryer, Policy Governance 4.3, Delegation to the Township Manager and Management Team.
Yes, and again, a short report is, begins on page seventy-four. This is the opportunity where the Board of Trustees reviews the policy that's applicable, reviews policies that are applicable to them. Any policy starting with four is more for the Board of, that's applicable to the Board of Trustees. So what you're really doing here is reviewing Policy 4.3 from the perspective of whether or not the Board of Trustees has been in compliance. the Board of Trustees has been in compliance. The, and this is a review, this to be done on an annual basis during the month of October. There's a few subpolicies to this policy, but I'll just read for the benefit of the board, help get you started. The top-level policy is that the Board will instruct the Township Manager or Management Team through written policies which prescribe the organizational ends to be achieved and the organizational situations and actions that are be, that are be, that are to be avoided, which you speak to in section two of governance policy, which is the executive limitations. That's kind of the box you put around the administration. As long, and, and as well as allowing the Township Management to use any reasonable interpretation of those policies. So that's the high level. Now you can have a board discussion as to whether or not you're compliant. There is a, uh, the full policy is in your report on page seventy-six. There's, uh, kinda what the Board traditionally runs through, questions one through four on page seventy-seven, that often guides you when you're discussing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question that maybe you guys can help me understand. It's just to bring, you know, we got our statements in front of us, but if you can, just kinda help me understand part of the one. The second one listed four point three point two. And it's at the end of that first sentence where it says, choosing the organizational means. So the full sentence is, the Board will develop policies which limit the latitude the Township Management Team may exercise in choosing the organizational means. And I just, if you guys can help define that for me, what, what we're saying there.
Manager Stuldryer?
The, the organizational means would, would mean that how the administration, the, how the administration effectuates and goes about achieving your ends. And so those are the means, okay? How, how do we do things, you know? Do we use a conveyor belt and a production line or do we use, you know, what, what tools do we use? And there are limits on those means. And those are what's articulated in section two, which is titled Executive Limitations. So you've developed a box for us to operate within. And as long as those means or those processes, activities to effectuate achievement of ends are within that box, then you've done your job.
Okay, that helps clarify for me.
Anyone else? So we can ask these questions. Do you believe the Board is in strict compliance with this policy as stated?
We do.
Yes.
Thank you. How do you think the Board can, could improve this process to be, oh, I'm sorry, my memory. Okay. Then that brings us, we're going to, as far discussed, we're going to skip over D for this evening. It brings us to New Business, item E, Discussion Action, Board of Trustees, FY two thousand twenty-six, Recommended Budget Discussion. We had.
So Chair, if I may, as I indicated at our last meeting, when I initially presented the recommended budget, we would provide agenda item time, agenda time for the Board to discuss the budget. That's why this is here. And so I have Department Directors here, myself, to answer any questions that you may have regarding the budget. Again, looking at the timeline, we've, we've, we've presented the recommended budget. We've held a public hearing. The calendar indicates that we're gonna try to adopt it by November twelfth, get it done before the holidays. And so we'll continue to have this item on the agenda. The next meeting is November twelfth. But you have two weeks. We can call a special meeting. We can do whatever you want to make sure you're comfortable with the budget that you'll eventually be asked to adopt.
Any discussion?
I have no questions.
I think it's laid out pretty well to understand it and it's definitely worthwhile taking the time to go through it.
I have one question because it came up last meeting. It was just a point of interest. Forty thousand dollars for cathodic protection on the water tower.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, why was there an increase? And not that, you know, we're bothered by that. We just, we're just curious. As much cathodic protection nerds.
The increase is basically due to increasing costs to do the work.
Okay.
And the labor. We updated the quote or the estimate from the contractor that we most likely do the work and the equipment has gone up quite good.
Okay.
So that's part of the increase.
Really?
We wanna make sure we have enough in there to cover the expense when we come for approval.
All right, thank you. We were just, are we going to replace an anode? Is there a monitoring system going in? What's going on?
Well, it is. It's, we're, we're replacing the whole system.
Okay.
On the Broadway Tower. There is currently no system that's operational. There's bracketing that's still in the tower. But the system is not operational. The system on the Lincoln Tower and the Deerfield Tower are both still operational and working. But Broadway, we have to replace the system. So that's what this is for.
Is it a local contractor?
It's probably Corpo.
Corpo?
They do most of the water tower, a lot of the water towers in Michigan and the bracketing matches their equipment. We will go out and solicit this because of the cost of the project.
Yeah.
My guess would be that it's Corpo. Because they could use it as a big system for everything.
Sure, sure.
And they do our inspections every year.
Okay.
Thank you. I was just curious.
With no further discussion, we'll table this and continue reviewing it.
And in addition, anybody that wants to call me, meet with me, email me, text me questions, please do. Appreciate the open door, Mark.
Thank you.
So bring us to extended public comment. Let's stick it to five minutes regarding any issue. Is there anyone online, Chair?
There is none.
Open to eight thirteen. There's no one online and no one's coming forward. Close extended public comment at eight thirteen. Time for Manager Comments, please.
I have none, thank you.
Thank you. Final Board Member Comments? Trustee Therring?
Uh, none, thank you.
Trustee Brown?
Yeah, I just have one and it's about Jamison Park and I, I got, you know, that, that, that park means something to me. My first baseball game there, I was six years old. I grew up in that park. It, it actually is, it, it, this, this motion tonight really, really meant more than just emotion and more than just, hey, let's get it out there, you know? This is, I know we are doing good. I have talked to the community about this. I'm serious. I've run on this. The manager mentioned that in my first term, I mentioned this was part of my drive for the younger and older generation in this community, Union Township. This is a big part of that. That portion out there, McDonald Park, was a big part of that. I'm so glad I was here when that, when that came about. And I'm so glad I'm here for this one, you know, and I, I know this is gonna work. I know the manager and the staff will work through what we need to work through with our help and all of us. But the community is really gonna appreciate this and it's gonna really mean something to, years after I'm gone, probably all of us are gone. You know, so I just wanna thank everybody again for the vote.
Thank you. Trustee Lannan?
All set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Lay?
Nothing.
I have nothing to report. So do we need a motion to adjourn? No, called me to adjourn at eight fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you.